Welcome, everybody. Summer's here? Yes? No? Maybe? I think summer is finally in the event. The events of summer are finally taking place. We were very active this weekend in the village. I hope you all got outside and were able to enjoy it. So with that, welcome to our May meeting. I'd like to lead off with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We're going to lead off tonight with a discussion on a very active topic called compost. And with that to lead off, I'm going to ask Vanessa to read into the record her R. letter. R. letter.
So just a little bit of background. We've been working on developing a food waste solution for the village of Rhinebeck for a number of years now. And we did receive $300,000 worth of grants to be able to build a composting facility. And we did receive DEC approval for a site plan that was registered with DEC. But we've run into some problems. So I'm going to, maybe I'll just step up to the podium to make it feel really official. This is a letter that I will be submitting to the town planning board. I'm writing to withdraw the village's application to build an area static pile composting operation at the village's highway department property. My sincere thanks to the town planning board for keeping an open mind, hearing the facts about what a small-scale area static pile system would entail. The planning board's objectivity and dedication to that board are really admirable. I want to specifically thank Edna Lockmund, who visited a similar ASP site to what we would have been building in Westchester. And she saw and she smelled for herself that a well-managed ASP facility of this scale does not attract wildlife and does not stink. Unfortunately, none of the neighbors took me up on that offer to visit the site. I believe our application before the town planning board was valid and would have been a proper use of our municipal property according to the town code. The village submitted the original grant applications and the town planning board application after discussion with and with the apparent support of the town board. Now, given the apparent opposition expressed at the town board meeting last night on May 8th, I don't see a path forward, given how this project has now been undermined and misinformation has been spread. I don't believe any future taxpayer dollars should be used in defense of a lawsuit where the town is actively working against us in the village and aligning with neighbors who oppose this project. I sincerely regret that we will not be able to provide this beneficial service to the community of Rhinebeck at this site. It would have been a leading example of a municipality taking steps to address the climate crisis and making a renewable resource out of food waste and recycled yard waste. We will continue our environmental work here in the village of Rhinebeck. We're currently working on our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, climate action plan, flood mitigation, safe routes to school. The list goes on. I hope the town will partner with the village in the future in a more supportive way. I don't think this is the end of our composting story. It's just time to regroup. Thank you.
I'm going to open up the public comment. Yes, sir. You can come to the podium, introduce yourself, your address, name and address.
My name is Arthur Burkins, 34 Violet Hill Road. My property is right across the Landsman Hill from the proposed site. I think it's a fantastic idea. I compost myself in my backyard. I know Vanessa's put a lot of time and energy and had a lot of people involved in this. But it simply didn't sit well, given some of the negatives with it. That said, last night, there was an offer made to have alternate sites for composting and perhaps even dropping off food waste at the transfer station and then taking it very reasonably priced to the compost facility over in Ulster County. And I know people in our group have talked to the compost managers in Ulster County. And they keep more than happy and they've got the capacity to take on Rhinebeck, Red Hook and several other towns at a very, very reasonable cost. So I think we shouldn't walk away from composting. We should reconfigure it, is all I have to say. But thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. Hand back, everyone's up first.
Hi, my name is Christiane Ane Crouch. I live at 18 Livingston Street. I've been a resident of Rhinebeck for 16 years now.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes, I can speak up. I would like to thank Vanessa Bertuzzi and everybody who worked on this plan. I am a village resident. I participated in the pilot project for composting. I saw firsthand the ways in which this changed, the waste that otherwise could not be processed in a usable and sustainable way. I am disheartened that this plan has had to be withdrawn. But I guess the thing that I took away from this is the lack of community around this issue and the ways in which, instead of coming together to find sustainable solutions to move forward, what this revealed to me was an unwillingness to engage with context, with depth, and with thinking about what actually brings us together. And instead resulted in accusations and an unnecessary threat towards public funds that could be spent to support our children. I brought my son with me tonight because I understand that composting and all of the climate smart solutions that we are trying to engage in are to better the future for our community. So I really want to respect the work that was done and to say that having the town and the village be at odds and having the town undermine what so many people in the village wanted to work towards is disheartening. And I'm hopeful that we will achieve a better solution at some point. But thank you for your hard work.
My name is Elizabeth Roth. I've been part of the subcommittee on composting, village composting, for the last year and a half under the leadership of trustee Bertuzzi. One thing that I admired so much about this process, thanks to Vanessa's dedication, is that we really dotted every i and crossed every t when it came to this project. And from what I can see, the problems for the neighbors around the site were just unfounded, completely unfounded. Each of their complaints, we've already addressed. We extended an invitation for them to visit an ASP site. They decided not to come. And this is incredibly frustrating. And the facts are that it didn't sit well with the neighbors. There's a word for that. There's an acronym for that, and it's called NIMBY. And it's NIMBYism that doesn't allow affordable housing to be built, to allow compost facilities to be built. And you know, and I could go on and on. You know what NIMBYism is. This was a perfect site because the village is already mulching on this site. So the mulch was right there in order to work with the food waste. And the combination means that there's no odor and also it accelerates the composting process. It was a perfect site. And the fact that we have been forced into a situation where we might be sued and waste village money is just a travesty. And I'm very, I'm heartbroken about this, actually. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Alan Gucci, and I live at the Gardens. Victoria spent an entire day with us. One day last week.
Vanessa.
Vanessa, I'm sorry. Vanessa spent an entire day with us last week explaining composting to the people who lived in the gardens. And I mentioned this at the planning board meeting. We're very sensitive about noises, about smells. If you've been through the gardens, you know that we spend a lot of time and effort caring for the gardens. So we're very sensitive about some of the problems that may have been brought up by the composting. But Vanessa explained everything. She spent the entire day there. We had an incredible turnout. The composting is now going forward very well with no complaints about smell or truck noise or anything else. So I was deeply disappointed that the town board acted so hastily. The planning board is going to at least have another public session and collect facts about the process. For them to take this vote like that, and I didn't even know it was going to be dealt with at the meeting. The expert wasn't there. It's just, it's to have neighbors essentially bullied and to threaten to sue the town and the village into bankruptcy? I mean, that's just bullying. That's not interested in the facts. That's not interested in the process. That's just, I don't want to hear. And I'm sensitive to concerns that people have. We were concerned about it in the gardens. But it's well, it could be well managed and well done. And I'm sorry it ended this way.
Raise your hand, please, if you identify. Thank you.
I'm Leon Green, 249 Burger Road. I appreciate all of the effort that everybody's put into composting. I support composting. I'd say a fair number, if not the majority, of folks that are adjacent to that property are composting. The issue at hand isn't whether or not we support village initiatives to increase composting, which I think most of us do, if not all of us do. The issue at hand is the site selection for the location of the project. And we do have laws in place and town code in place to protect property holders and their rights to both enjoy their property and to not see their property value impacted. And while all of you would like composting to happen, I don't understand why there's a sort of zero-sum perspective on this, that this site was chosen absent community impact, a community input from the people impacted by it. We get comments about how this isn't community-minded. But how is it community-minded to, without comment, try and drop this facility next to your neighbors and then ignore their concerns and roll it forward? We would all be happy to come to a town board meeting and support the town working with the village to try and find an alternate site that's not within 50 yards of somebody's house. But this is about us protecting ourselves. It is. Because you're putting something in an adjacent property which is not appropriate for a residential neighborhood. And if somebody were to say, hey, let's take that lot next to the Father Brogan Center and let's put a commercial composting facility there. You have a lot of villagers up in arms. It's no different. Just because it's outside the village and you may not view us as your neighbors doesn't mean that you get to tell us to suck it up for the public good. It's not the way the law works. So I appreciate all of everybody's efforts. I hope the village continues to put effort into composting and to work with the town to find a site for it. Thank you.
I'd like to correct something that Leon said, which is that according to our DEC-approved site plan, there's a 200-foot setback. So the nearest neighbor's house is not 50 feet away.
I said, I think I said 100 yards.
No, you said 50 feet.
100 yards. So I was off by 50 feet. I apologize.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that I did go and I knocked on doors. I called, I emailed every neighbor within adjoining property, including yourself. And almost to a one, they all were supportive.
That is not true.
Until you started talking to them.
That is not true.
Leon, let her speak, please. This is not a debate. We let you speak, let the trustee speak.
That's all I have to say.
Trustees should not be lying on mic.
No, please. Any other conversation? But yes, come on up.
Hi, I'm Karen Murphy, 74 Violet Hill Road. I have a letter I'd like to read on record from a neighbor who couldn't be here to the Rhinebeck Village Board. This is from Barry and Michelle Enner. Barry and I have lived in and loved Rhinebeck for over 25 years and have raised two children here. As we have mentioned before, we are absolutely in favor of compost facility, but not at the village garage location. However, as it is presented now, the proposed facility leaves many unanswered questions. We respectfully request that you thoroughly address and answer the questions of concerned residents. Financial. Review the short and long-term financial impacts of the facility. Review the five-year pro forma, including any and all construction, operational and maintenance expenses. Competitive bids for construction for the end. Safety, health and risk management. Assurance of daily compliance and management. Who's going to do that? Draft of liability insurance policy to be procured. Plan of water source protection. Operational plan of protecting against unwanted materials. Response plan for immediate long-term odor, sound and bacterial infection. How does waste arrive at the facility and compost leave the facility? What are the number of cars and trucks estimated weekly? The existing sites as presented by Vanessa were non-residential sites. So they're not really comparable as suggested by Vanessa. We respectfully submit this to the board, Michelle and Barry Enner.
Anybody else want to speak? Donna, come on up.
Are you, I just question, are you entertaining comments about the thing?
Yes. On the agenda is another public comment. We'll get to that.
Oh, okay.
We're not into that portion yet.
Sorry.
It's okay. And regarding the compost, does anybody else have anything to say?
Chris Bender, 72 Violet Hill. I believe either myself or Art and John are the closest properties physically to the site. I also compost. We've got a tumbler. It takes up about three feet by two feet. You can put it on a little porch. I think it was about $120 on Amazon for anybody that's really disappointed in what you want to compost your own stuff. I won't get into any of the negatives that I guess are in question. Smell and animals and things of that nature. But I don't think it's in question that putting something like that right next to residential properties would decrease home values. Home values are a lot about perception. And having something like that would be akin to having a dog kennel next door or something else that people generally don't want next door. Town and village are very financially advantaged compared to most other areas of anywhere, for that matter. My wife and I bought into our house $239,000. I'm pretty sure we're one of the lowest-priced houses in the town or the village. And we can't take a hit on our property value for anybody's projects that I think clearly have a better spot to go, like the Stone Church property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Cox. I live at 49 Kelly Street in Reincliffe. And I felt really surprised by what felt like an about-face that I heard the news from the town meeting last night. And just want to express perhaps some echo, but also my own concern about the kind of precedent this sets in terms of process going forward. That I think, I appreciate and share the sense that we are a highly resourced community. And conflict is something that we should be able to embrace and move through. And it felt like at the planning board meeting last week that there was a lot of really high energy and high commitment to this process, but with some strong opinions. And to see the town walk away from what could have been the edge of moving forward through conflict and through perceived conflict is disappointing to me. I don't know the nature of how quickly this legal action would have been taken to the point that the town would have kind of collapsed or what that means. But the process and what that sends as a precedent for the community and the work between the village and the town, compost or not, an aside, and all these things going forward, and a process that had facilitated and guided and signaled enough support from the town that $300,000 in funding was received that may have to be returned and what that means in terms of the future potential for town and village efforts to gain and garner funding when maybe Rhinebeck isn't a town you want to invest in, people there get into a business and then the money has to be returned. That's deeply concerning for me as someone who's raising children here. So I've been really happy and honored to be part of this process and to hear how heartfelt people are about where they live. That's super meaningful. And I think we should have committed to each other to move through that and found other types of solutions.
Yeah, come on up.
Hi, my name is Catherine Kelliver. I live at 26 Center Street. I am also on the subcommittee for the compost initiative. And I actually was supposed to present tonight on my findings from the New York State Compost Conference a few weeks ago. Part of that involved visiting the largest compost facility in the state, which produces about 100 times more volume than our proposed facility for Rhinebeck. I just want to go on record and share that I went acutely aware of all concerns I've heard. I had never visited a compost facility before and I did not see any smell, any pest, any noise besides trucks dropping off. So just wanted to share a firsthand account from a very large facility about what's actually happening at a compost facility. I just want to echo the previous speaker's request that it sounds like everyone here is interested in composting and that we keep in mind that in the next five to 10 years, composting is going to be required. Organic scraps pickup will be required by the state. That is the direction we're moving in. So if this is not the site, I'd really love to see everyone on both sides working together to come up with a municipal solution for Rhinebeck, which would have been at the forefront of the Hudson Valley in our region.
Hi, Kirsten Green, 249 Burger Road. I know a lot of time and effort went into the pilot. I want to thank you guys for even pursuing it. I think composting is very important. It's valuable. It's the direction we need to all be heading. I just want to mention that compost sites, it's not something you can drop in on. You have to schedule a tour. So I think when you go and visit the compost site, you get to see the best and smell the best because they've mitigated the odor by the time you've walked through the doors. I'd like to say that I don't think this is a NIMBY thing. I think this is a Ni'abri thing. This really shouldn't be in anybody's backyard. I wouldn't ask you to put it in your backyard. I wouldn't ask you to put it in your backyard. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleanor Pupko, Village Green. I think we're forgetting a really important component here, and that's becoming more frugal. If we didn't create this much waste, we wouldn't be fighting over where to put it. So I think maybe we need to start looking in a different direction and start being a little bit careful about the packaging we buy and how much food we throw out and that sort of stuff. And I think maybe we'd be a little bit further ahead and not maybe in quite the same dilemma. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kira Manso-Brown, and I live at 304 Route 308. And I want to echo the idea of process. And as someone who wasn't brought in or made aware of this and lives adjacent to what was the proposed site, I think this is a really excellent opportunity for us to truly consider coalition and community building. We should not let this be the last time we come together to talk about composting. And it doesn't have to be. And I appreciate the efforts. But I do want to say in terms of process, I think, you know, hearing from the town planning board only a few weeks before the most recent meeting wasn't an ideal time to be first made aware or brought in. So I look forward to an opportunity to Vanessa potentially working with you or whomever else is excited about this as a town resident. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to close the public comment session for this portion of the thing. I'd like to make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the application to the town planning board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Going to call for a vote by roll call.
If I start talking, I'm not going to stop. So, yeah.
I feel like at this point, it's probably the prudent thing to do.
Call for a vote. Lydia. Rick.
Aye.
Fran.
Aye.
Vanessa.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Vote is cast. All are in favor of withdrawing our application to the town of Rhinebeck. I wish it had, the process could have gone better. All right. We're going to move on. Public comments. Donna, since you were there, how about, come on up.
Come on up.
Donna Warner.
Do you want to give everybody a chance to exit out, Donna?
Okay.
I just want everybody to be able to hear. Take everybody be able to hear you, that's all.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Donna Warner, Beach Street. And I'm here just to check in again on the wastewater treatment capacity issue and whether or not last month I had asked about Lucas Hill. And, you know, I happen, I'll just say, I'm a strong supporter of affordable housing and hope it moves forward. And I think the next step is the reporting.
You're going to hear tonight.
Will it, will we?
I think that's the plan.
Okay. Under what agenda item may I ask?
When we talk to Lucas Hill under current projects.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Treasurer's report.
Okay. Treasurer's report is for the period ending April 30th. The general fund ended the month with $205,000. The general fund ended the month with $205,005.7. Water fund ended the month with $118,755.12. And the sewer fund ended the month with $105,953.54. Combined with the general water and sewer, the New York class accounts earned $9,084 per month. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $112,121.37. In the water fund, $74,030.22. In the sewer fund, $23,936.05. A water treatment upgrade project, $15,777.98. The grant for the compost, $7,016.01. The frost grant for the trees, $4,841.17. And escrow bills totaling $4,464.50. Monthly operating statement is provided with the revenue and expenditures through May 9th. The water and wastewater, the billing and adjustments as signed off by trustee Nunaker are presented for authorization.
I'd like to get the water and wastewater adjustments approved as presented.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Budget amendments. I have a list of budget amendments for the end of the fiscal year close. I won't go over all of them, but I, some of the major ones in the police equipment, $30,646. And that is for the UTV that was partially funded by donations and partially out of the capital fund. We also have allocation, $66,000 for allocation reimbursement for chips for the revenue and the expense item. And we also have the order of the meter replacements, water capital and the water equipment for And then the rest are various budget amendments within the departments.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments as presented by the treasurer.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 So.
Okay, the budget 2324, the tax cap and constitutional tax margin have been filed with the New York State Comptroller's Office. Tax bills are being calculated and then will be prepared by the county with unpaid taxes as of March 31st and the fiscal year end 2223. The year-end close process is underway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Fran, per your question?
Yeah, so basic housekeeping of the Summers Drive. We have to isolate the hydrant and replace it. Holder valves aren't holding, so we need to do a line stop and insertion valve there. So it's, it's a unique thing. They tend to be territorial about where they go. And if you go to a competitor, they say, oh, yeah, you know, Joe's Garage does that area and we don't, anything. So, and it also goes by price point. This is a smaller valve, so there's like, for the larger transmission lines, it's kind of a different service provider. So this is the bid that we have, $4,000 for the line stop and the insertion valve for $7,500. So I'd like to get a motion to approve that.
Second. Discussion.
I would just like to add that we're going to be taking that from the capital water account.
You agree?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sure.
Eleven grand, wow.
Can the highway department help dig?
They're going to dig. They'll help dig, yeah.
Do you, do we have a date?
No, not yet.
Okay.
I can provide that with you.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So carried. Resolutions. Fran, you're still up. Wastewater plant.
So Robert, Robert Flores is here for Delaware Engineering to, to talk about the proposal for the upgrades to the wastewater plant. We have been awarded 0% financing for this project, which is like a grant, substantial grant within itself. And right now, we've been in preliminary engineering. And there's another round of EFC funding that's coming up in July 28th. And we, we're going to apply for that, and it's a 25% grant, right?
Right, so that's the follow-up to the LEA grant, which is 25% grant, and the bill, which could be 50% grant.
Oh, okay. So we had done the engineering report, which I gave you guys a long time ago for the wastewater plant, and we have come up with a, like a must-have version. We do have a high rate over at the wastewater plant, and since the fall, we've been talking about some things that will just put it, put the facility into making upgrades so it's going to be fit for another, you know, 30, 40 years, but not doing substantial upgrades to our capacity.
Right.
By adding another train or something like that.
Right, what we found through the preliminary engineering is that your treatment limits, discharge limits are not going to change. So that means no new technology is needed to treat the water better, right? So no major retrofit of your oxidation plant. So it happens to be built, you know, it was built in 85 or so, so it is old and it's got things that need to be upgraded. It meets the limits that you have today and that you're going to expect to have for near future. So that's one of the major changes in reducing the scope.
Right.
So the new scope is 3 million now, right? As presented here?
That's, that's the, that's the goal right now of the budget, yeah.
Against the 5.5 that we had originally projected.
So, but I guess a point to that. So the scope for design is for that smaller $3 million project. For the applications, my suggestion is that you, that you apply for the full scope because, you know, the grants are a percentage of the project, right? And your seeker, your bond resolution and engineering board support 5.5 million. So if you were able to get a grant, it gives you more flexibility for things that got dropped off, this, you know, and gives you, gives you more room to, you know, make adjustments, change the scope, et cetera, if you are successful, right? So because you, you're just as likely to get accepted for a $3 million application as a 5.5 million. But if you apply for three, you get, you know, 25% of three. Apply for five and a half, you get 25% of five and a half.
But if you only spend three, you still only get the 25% of the three.
That's right.
Right.
You don't get to spend that one, right? If you're not doing it. I just want to make, make it clear for the public.
That's right. The actual cash is based on the actual cost of the completed project.
One of the things you and I discussed was the future and the next 30 years, given that we were talking about composting and whatever, and anaerobic digesters are coming. A large number of the facilities are small like ours around the country. We know that anaerobic digesters don't really fit today for that. But anything that you're proposing, would it preclude in the future being able to do anaerobic digesters at our facility?
Right, it doesn't close that door. It doesn't. We, we had talked about maybe doing a pilot or doing a feasibility study, which is not currently in scope. But the improvements that are scheduled right now wouldn't, you know, close the door on anything in the future.
Well, one improvement that you and I talked about was before it enters into the sludge building, there's a tank there.
Right.
And modifying that tank because that will only help today with the upgrade, but also help in the future.
Right, that's what, that's one of your treatment bottlenecks today. So I don't know if you guys remember this history, but you have the original plant that was built 1980s, right? They called that the Ox Plant. Then you added basically double capacity.
For the gardens.
The EA plant. But you didn't double your sludge holding tank.
Same size.
Right. So you have, you have, yeah, 260,000 out a day treatment plant, but your sludge holding tank is sized for 130, right?
Right. So it should, it should also be better for dewatering the waste, so, you know, our carting costs for the sludge should go down.
Right. So the longer you store it, the more you digest, the less the volume, and it gives the operator much more flexibility.
And read the math, because, and maybe it's me, because I don't understand some of it, but in the scope of work, we're the one, two, three, four, five, I didn't see that item.
So that's.
That's one of them, and it's just in a different terminology.
So is this an enlarge or add sludge tank? That's the bullet.
That's the sludge tank. That's that.
A million dollar item.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that that was in there. Now the.
$900,000. Well, it'll, it's going to be a million by the time we go.
And, and one of the other things we talked about is nobody's doing oxidation today.
Correct, there's a, there's, you know.
So the next 30 years, we're spending money, we want to make sure this is going to last us a long time. And nobody today is doing oxidation at all.
Right.
In new facilities.
Right, so, so just for the benefit of everybody, so the requirements of treatment back in the 80s was BOD removal, no ammonia nitrification, as we call it. So as time went on, the limits were, nitrification limits were added to wastewater plants, like yours was, right? And you're able to do it with the older technology. But then the, what's happening is the nitrification discharge limits are getting tighter, and then the next phase is there are going to be denitrification limits. So there's a point where you can't remove, nitrate more than what you can now because you'll need bigger tanks, different technology, and you definitely can't denitrify because you don't have, you don't have that technology to do it, so.
You kind of lost me.
One of the things that was done in the preliminary phase is we contacted the D E C and went through the full, what they call technical review of your permit to make sure you weren't about to get hit with, you know, denitrification limits next year, right? So we've gone through that process. We have draft limits, which are the same as you have now. There's some more paperwork to be done, but that's why at the moment, we're not, that's not a high priority right now, right? To increase the, transform your technology or, you know, significantly change it because it works for your limits. And whether it's 10 years or 15 years when they change, that'll be the time to, you know, to make, to make the upgrade.
All right, and that's my concern is if we have to do an upgrade, how do we do it? If now's the time to ask for money, is now that is, and I don't know what it's going to be like 10 years from now, we don't have that crystal ball, would it be worthwhile considering how to do an upgrade now to increase capacity?
So, so that we, that was part of the evaluation that we've done so far, right? So there's suggestions on how you could do it, but that's the, you know, roughly the 2 million we're leaving behind, right?
Right.
So if we apply for the five and a half, which matches your bond resolution, then if you end, you're successful, you can revisit this, right? If you want to, you know, provide greater treatment.
Give me, provide greater treatment or to switch the process so we don't have to deal with a denitrification of that sometimes?
So if you, if you provide greater treatment, what I mean by that is to, you know, take it the next step and denitrify and lower your nitrification to both sides of the stream. Yeah, so you would, you'd be ahead of the game, right? Mechanically and technologically. Right now, you're just maintaining what you have on the biological process.
But when you apply for a grant, don't you have to tell them what you're doing with that grant?
So, right, so right now, the report says everything, right? So up to now, you've authorized us to do preliminary engineering. I guess we're here to discuss whether you can authorize us to start final design and whether we're doing final design on those major pieces that were identified here, right? And we'll go through the grant, grant round, you know, this year, right? And sometime in January, when you find out the results, you can revisit the scope, right?
Got it. So if we apply for the five and a half, we see how much we get, and then we can talk about how much we actually want to do. Is that sort of the goal here?
Yeah.
Okay. Super quick question coming from someone who knows literally nothing about sewer plants other than what they do on a very broad level. So ours is 50-ish years old. If I'm doing that math right, 40-ish years, 40 years old?
The first, the first half of it, yes.
The older section.
Right, the older section. So how, is it working? It's working. How long is the older part of it going to continue to work?
So you've done, and Brad could, could, could expand on this, but you've done mechanical changes, like replace a motor, replace a gear box.
Yeah, we're doing it. So one of the discussions we had is we still have an item in there to upgrade that, and that is there's an auger lip, which is like magic. I mean, the water goes up a lip.
That's true.
Basically unthreaded, it pulls the water up like screw.
Archimedes.
Unthreaded, unthreaded screw. And we would replace that because it's, you know, it's also electrically inefficient. So if we have submersible pumps at the bottom and pump it up, that would be one way of.
Dealing with the old.
Updating the ox ditch.
That's right. So, so that, that 40-year-old process has screw pumps that are probably, you know, 100-year-old technology, right? They're outdated, 84.
I mean, if we're talking about archimedes, probably thousands.
Thousands of years old.
Great studies.
And there's, there's, inside the wastewater plant, there's a continuous loop, or we call it return actuator to sludge. And that's the purpose of those screw pumps. So those will be replaced with modern pumps. So, so that piece.
Okay, but is the older, is the 40-year-old system like barring a few updates here and there, like good enough?
So the concrete tank, you know, appears to be perfectly fine, right? And concrete lasts hundreds of years, right?
Right.
You know, and you, and mechanically, like I said, you've been replacing motors, gears, drives.
Right, so we've been maintaining.
We've been doing that through operating expenses.
Yeah.
We just did a big thing last year.
Yeah, I remember, yeah, I remember that. Okay, so, so we're talking about upgrading like this sludge holding tank.
Yeah, so, so the major components, like, do we want to run through them? There we go.
I, I mean, only if it would be helpful.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, it would be. See, that's the scope, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so mechanical bar screen, because I think everybody's kind of somewhat familiar with the issues of flushable wipes, clogging everything.
Yeah.
So that's why you need a mechanical screen.
Okay.
Because, you know.
And there's a lot of downstream problems with that. They're just, there's mats everywhere. They find each other and they twine up and then they, like through the entire process because the stuff is getting past the muffin monster grinder thing. So we would replace that with this screen, which would pull the.
So if you, if you imagine.
Material out of the system.
If you make the small, the hole smaller, it captures more stuff. That requires you to constantly rake. And, yeah, you cannot have a person there 24 hours a day raking it, so.
Yeah, it's like keeping a filter that's too small.
That's the mechanical screen, yeah.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So there's that.
So there's that. Then there's the pumps that Brad was just talking about.
Yep.
Which replace kind of the old screw pumps.
Archimedes screw, right? Right.
We have the sludge tank.
Okay.
You know, make it to the adequate capacity, right?
Yep.
And that's where I say, well, evaluate whether it's more efficient to enlarge it or just build another tank.
Okay.
Sand filter, right now, like I said, we, you have the two, two sides of the plank. You have the original 1980s, then you have the, the new 1990s, right? And then they go, they both go to sand filters, but they're, they're locked in. So like side one goes to side one and side two goes to side two, and there's no way to crisscross.
Okay.
So, you know, they have for maintenance, like that kind of thing. So, and then there's just some upgrades to go with that. Replace some sand media, painted, painting, that kind of thing. So that's your sand filters. And then your UV disinfection, which is after sand, after sand filtration, it goes to UV and then it goes to the river. That is also very old and outdated. It's a piece of equipment that, you know, you're, that's not manufactured anymore. You can't buy replacement parts.
Like Windows 95. I got it.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Some of the last ballots that you can get. So when, when they go out, they're, they're, that's it.
You're, you're buying spare parts at, you know, literally on eBay and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Awesome.
But everything's fine. Don't.
Don't, don't anybody freak out. So, so those are the major pieces, yeah.
Okay. All right, and so like none of that requires, so, so that's basically kind of like replacing the 40-year-old system without actually replacing the 40-year-old system. Okay. I get that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, okay.
So, so just from a slightly higher point of view, we're in compliance right now.
That's right.
The upgrades will keep us within compliance for the foreseeable future.
Right.
At some time, the standards are going to be tightened, at which point we will have to look at alternative systems.
Well.
Or, we don't, or.
It's the same thing with PFAS, like are, are we going to have violation with PFAS or so?
Well, I would, I would, but my guesstimate, though, is that when they tighten the standards, there's going to be an outcry.
Oh, yeah.
there's gonna be an outcry for funding.
Well, there's also gonna be an outcry for you went too far, which is like, Vanessa had this article from what they did in Maine, with they made the PFAS regulation for the sludge. So rigorous, they can't take it anywhere.
So... So what I, so what I'm saying is, so it seems like upgrading is how we stay within compliance, but not anticipating, necessarily anticipating where the regulations are gonna go, to me, is the right move, because if they do tighten regulations, then people are gonna, we're gonna be going back for another big round of funding. And since we don't know when that is or what that looks like, I would rather do this incremental piece now, and then we'll play that, play that part out later, if it's five years or ten years, whenever that's, whenever, you know, and then maybe new technology, whatever it is. So I think this intermediate phase makes sense without trying to anticipate too much what's gonna be happening in the future.
Now, also, what I pointed out once was that this isn't a zero-sum game either, because at some point, we'll probably deal with expansion through via affordable housing or extending the commercial district hookups or whatever. And we get more customers, and we have the excess capacity now, that's... The operating efficiencies don't change, like, we don't have to have more operating expenses to get more revenue. So that revenue could go to a bond for something that's required in the future. We could even, if we got, like, I think I pointed out, we had four hundred bedrooms hooked up. That's a hundred gallons a day, it's thirteen and a half dollars per thousand gallons. You know, then we have more revenue, and then we can add another train, or we can actually increase the capacity of oxidation ditch.
Do we have space to increase?
Can I interrupt? Brandy, you're on a short stop, right?
I need something if I like. I need to leave in like half an hour.
Okay, all right.
Maybe she can go right.
Yeah.
So I don't know how long we want to...
Oh, God.
The question is, I only have one last question. What are you asking for tonight?
I want...
I don't know what you're asking for.
I want you guys to approve final engineering, which is this proposal that we have a bond with.
To do the money to do the preliminary engineering?
We've already done the bond approval, so Karen has the authority to do a short-term financing for final engineering forward. Two processes, one will continue to try to get a grant, but two, just go through the engineering. Because the free money that we have, yeah, zero percent.
Just to make clear, whatever somebody knows, what we're asking for...
Yeah, well, I was about to get to that point.
Okay.
And I wanted to point out that I believe that Delaware Engineering should do it because they did all the preliminary stuff, and they've got all the know-how with this particular project. And that there might be some issues, but...
I have a quick question.
With going out to bid, but that we have grandfathered in.
That was my question.
Yeah.
I mean, I think you had looked that up, Robert, and we had the engineering started prior to December when we have to go out to get RFQs for engineering.
Right, because every year, every round of funding, the rules change. So this year is round of funding.
Well, this was a big change for engineers to have to do RFQs.
There's a very, yeah, there's a very particular RFQ process that they want you to do.
Is that request for qualifications?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So we have an agreement with you that started our preliminary? So this will be an amendment to that, is what, the way it's written now.
Right.
Okay, so we're not agreeing to anything that we haven't already agreed to other than that you're just gonna continue doing the work?
No, money, we have to prove...
We're gonna send three hundred and five thousand dollars.
We have to approve the money.
It goes from four hundred to...
Seven hundred.
No.
Look, the amendment from me, okay?
Two fifty for design, ten thousand for bidding, and the original forty-five grand. So we're asking for an additional two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in services.
Got it.
But it's our, this is our must-have list.
So do you, and this is my question, maybe you, Robert. So previously, we did do a bond for the five point five million for the wastewater. And my question is, is do you want to authorize a three hundred thousand bond anticipation note on this, or bond anticipation note on this bond? And do we have to do this again if we apply for a grant again? Or is, are we okay to just still have this in place?
Right, the one you did last year, the one you did last year counts for this.
Okay, so I guess...
Because actually, you wouldn't have time to redo it.
Okay, so then, and then also, if we, if the board authorizes a bond anticipation note, then, as you know, the clock starts ticking to get this going because then we have a timeframe that we have to...
We already committed to the EFC that we wanted, we were gonna be under short-term financing by, that October twenty...
Right.
Yeah, so we really need to move forward.
Okay, so this is actually just doing that?
Yeah, this is actually following up with that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Are you looking, do you want to make it three hundred thousand?
Yeah, three hundred and five thousand.
Three hundred and five.
Do you wanna put any buffer there?
It's contracted amount, it actually may be less. I'm hoping it'll be less, yeah.
So there's another caveat to that, so assuming everything goes as planned, right? And you're, in October, you close on your, on your short-term financing with EFC, then you'll be paying your bills out of that money.
Right.
As opposed to the ban.
Got it.
Think this is gonna happen that fast?
Yeah, I mean, how? That was my question.
I mean, it is October, right, you gotta have some hope.
Well, it's gonna take me, what?
Two months.
For fifty days to do a BAN, and...
We can, can we...
So just remember, it's a cold, you have to do a cold BAN.
Right.
Can we tap into our fund balance and then re-plant shit with this later? When the invoices start coming in?
I guess we could do that. All right, I, so what do you want? How much do you want the BAN to be for? Three oh five, or you want it...
Well, we paid forty-five, forty-five thousand was under our budget last year, so it's...
So just be two sixty?
Yeah.
Call it thirty.
Do you want any?
Two seventy-five.
There's a little five thousand left in that account, so I don't know if you want anything additional. I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I think just now, the board has to think about this because there's no place for this money to come from unless it comes from balance right now, right?
Correct, until we get, until we get the BAN.
Until we get the financing approved.
So technically, has a BAN authority?
I'll do it tomorrow, I mean, I'll do, if the board agrees on an amount, I'll go out and get the BAN, but...
Does Delaware Engineering agree to not be paid until we actually receive the BAN?
Well, that's fine.
Okay, fair.
It's, you know...
It's on the record.
Yeah, yeah, sixteen to ninety days is...
Kind of normal.
So do you want to do three twenty-fives? Do you want to...
Okay.
Okay.
And just to be clear, then, we're not gonna take them fund balance, we're gonna do the ban, we're gonna wait to pay you until we get that approved. And then when we get the short-term financing, we're gonna pay off the ban to do that.
That's right.
A lot of logistics there, Karen.
Yeah, thank you, Karen.
I also wanted to be subject to Rich Olson's approval, just this language. This is like, like the other two that we already signed.
We normally would take it through, right?
Yeah, but I mean, if we, when we vote on it tonight, just condition on Rich.
Makes sense.
All right, so make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion for that.
For everything we just said. Did you get all that, or did you? Okay, so...
No, wait, Karen, my question, Karen, you clear? This is important.
Okay, I think it's pretty fast. I mean, I think to get the BAN and then, and then by October to close on the short-term funding.
Well, you're, yeah, you're on the, you're on the train already, right? To get to October.
Yeah, we have not slowed down.
Okay, and just FYI, we've got a water project going on this time. Okay, I just want to be clear, I will do the BAN for three twenty-five, and I'll work with you, Robert, on the timing.
And approve this contract subject to Rich Olson's approval.
And that's up to you guys.
Do we need two motions, one for the ban, one for the approval of the contract?
No, I thought we did it as one.
Okay, we just...
Okay, just asking.
Ban for three twenty-five, the approval of the contracts.
Subject to Rich Olson's.
Subject to Rich Olson's.
I'm sorry, what?
Brand?
We're agreeing to the ban interim financing to the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And agree to the proposal from Delaware Engineering that's on the agenda.
Subject to attorneys.
Prove that, subject to attorney's review and the language.
All right, we have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Question. And this is just a very basic question of village operations. Do we have the capacity to be doing this? You just sort of made a small remark about, you know, we're already doing the water project. Like, do we actually have the capacity to be doing this, given the staff we have and the operations that we have?
Yeah, I mean, even the water stuff comes in, and it's like the engineering's going on, and it's, it's kind of... They know who to talk to, they talk to Brian a lot.
Okay.
I get the purchase order requests, and I compare the percentages that are going on. Yeah, I think, and the next fiscal year's gonna be just, we're gonna be in engineering.
And Karen...
But Karen's EFC burden...
Like, do you have capacity to be handling all this complex items?
We'll hit later.
Well, I do rely on the engineers.
Yeah, I get that.
I mean, for, I mean, I'm gonna rely on you for a lot of the timing and a lot of getting this stuff in, just like Brandy for the mid-grant, you know, just to keep me on point with the reimbursement.
Now, we can ask for administrative reimbursement as part of the Brian request. But that's just...
I think they already kind of do that, and the engineers pretty much, they already do that. It doesn't negate it coming to the village and having to be reimbursed from EFC, so...
Let's just be clear, this all depends on either A, getting a grant or us approving to go for your rich financing.
We're still gonna have the EFC hurdles.
That's what I just said.
Yeah, with the zero percent financing.
Which is, if, could delay the project, is what I'm saying.
Got it, thank you, appreciate that.
There's unknowns.
Right, there's always unknowns.
It's to get the engineer...
But you're committing to the bond anticipation, right?
Okay.
Got it, great.
All right.
Motion second.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Thanks, Robert. All right, we're gonna take a short, not, we're gonna, a deviation from our agenda because Randy Nelson from Land Bond is here to talk to us about Center Street and Locust Hill, correct?
Yes. Thank you. So good evening, everyone. So in terms of current projects, so in your board packet, I have provided a advertisement for bids for the Center Street Water Main project. And that project currently is in front of the county health department for final approval. We sent revised plans addressing their last round of comments two weeks ago. And Dave Pearson said he should have approval from him imminently. So we are hoping to put this out to bid upon receipt of approval pending our authorization to allow us to do that. So this advertisement for bid identifies the scope and location of the project. All we would do is fill in that blank line on the date that bids would be due. But we anticipate that that will happen before your June meeting, so we'd just like to try and get that out to bid before your June meeting.
All right, so there's two blank lines. One is, you know, when the bids are due.
Yep.
And then the second is the mandatory, or not, you're making it non-mandatory bid conference.
Yeah, exactly.
You, and so that date is prior to the bids?
That's correct. So typically, what we would do is we would put an advertisement out for bids. So let's say we could put that out for bid on Friday. We'd have a pre-bid meeting that'd be a week later, and then bids would be due three weeks after that. And then it takes us a few days to, we would open the bids with you all. And it takes us a few days to check the bidders and come up with a recommendation for a award, which if we get approval from the county this week, we would try and get that out to bid so that we can have something in front of you for the June meeting.
All right, so we're waiting for county approval.
Correct.
We're gonna set a date today?
No, we won't set a date today.
You don't want to set a date today?
I would like it to be subject to county approval, so the timing is subject to county.
You will then work with us to set a date?
We will work with Martina to get this posted in the paper.
Cool.
And let us all know, because I want to call somebody.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And I did just want to confirm, we want, we want to get a lot of bidders, so all calls are good. Everybody has to go through the same process for bidding and provide information that demonstrates they're qualified. But I did want to confirm that we did acquire the water main, right?
We did, it's six hundred and twenty feet, I think, it's at the wastewater facility.
All right, I do...
Down at the wastewater treatment plant.
Bidders may want to look at that, and we were discussing that today as to whether...
I didn't see that you mentioned the two catch basins in the scope.
We took everything except for the water main out of the scope, so it's just the water main and the paving can...
We're doing the catch basins?
Highway do the catch basins, yeah.
We, they were not in the scope because...
We were trying to get a clean water.
We removed all the drainage and reduced the cost.
Right, but didn't Grantsy do catch basins for us last time?
They did, but we contracted separately for them.
Okay. Can we amend it then, later, when we get the person out there to do? If they want to do it?
Potentially.
We can amend it?
Yeah.
I want to take that back, I remember two catch basins being included, Brandy, in the proposal.
That's what I thought.
Yes, I'm sorry. I remember two catch basins in the proposal, but not the repair of some of them that we said we would need to do.
I will amend the, I will confirm that is still in the plans.
Please do, yep.
And amend the advertisement for bid as necessary.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Center Street Improvement Project advertisement for bids. Thank you, Lydia. Any other conversation, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All right.
We'll be in touch as soon as the county approves of, approves of plans. In terms of Village Hall Sidewalk, that is before the DOT for permit approval. And again, pending their approval, I'm hoping again, June, we would be back to you guys for approval of that project and moving forward on bidding the sidewalk improvements here at Village Hall and at the village parking lot. And then Locust Hill, so Locust Hill is the proposed affordable housing development in the town of Ryanbeck, eighty units, as you know. We have been tasked with reviewing the proposal to include the wastewater flows from Locust Hill in the village's system. It was actually really helpful to hear Robert tonight say that there was not any capacity increase because that was one of our outstanding questions. So I have a draft document, we are working on a couple of outstanding items, so one, I wanted to check with Robert on whether or not we were gonna do any capacity increase at the plant. You guys are currently operating at about seventy to seventy-five percent of your plant capacity. The EFC won't let you get to a hundred before you have to expand, you have to give yourself some wiggle room. So Locust Hill would contribute another six to seven percent in that additional capacity. However, the meat and potatoes of what we've been doing is working with the comp plan committee to understand what increases in sewer may be desirable as a part of the comprehensive plan process and any zoning changes that might flow from that comprehensive plan process. And from the comprehensive plan committee, what we've received is that sixty-three percent of the survey respondents for the comp plan would like to see the village extend sewer service to more of a service area in the village. And I have just been provided a number of properties where the committee on housing is looking at doing a multifamily analysis, be it conversion of existing structures that are currently shown to be occupied at a very low rate. So say it's an old Victoria, and then it has one point two five people in it on average. It potentially could be converted to a three-unit building, and that conversion would trigger the need to upgrade the septic system, and do the properties there have the space to upgrade the septic system? So we are crunching those numbers and working with county planning right now to evaluate those properties that are within close proximity where sewer is now. We're not looking at the far reaches of the village. So really, just in this core area where sewer service is now. But, you know, high-level snapshot is that Locust Hill would increase another six to seven percent of the capacity. You probably need to reserve ten percent of capacity as your buffer before D C would tell you you need to upgrade the plant, which leaves ten to thirteen percent of the plant's capacity available for this, the multifamily, potential multifamily build-out or build-out of underutilized properties within the village. So what I'd like to do is, when we finish the analysis based on the housing subcommittee's recommendations of identifying potential multifamily development, is sit down with maybe a working group and... maybe as a working group, and just run through what's being presented in a draft form, and then maybe give you a draft document to look at, and then finalize it. Sounds good.
How many family, how many, yeah, how many bedrooms does that 3%, or family units, does that 3%?
The 6 to 7%.
6 to 7%.
The 60, asking question.
No, no, we're, we're getting 6 to 7% increase from Locust Hill.
Oh, sure, yes.
Which leaves us approximately 3%.
No, which, no.
No, you're 70 now, so you have about 30% capacity, 10 you should reserve, because D E C won't let you get to 20.
Okay, so 90, okay.
You have 20, so you've got about 10, I would say 10 to 15.
So, how many households does that 10%?
Figure 100 gallons a bedroom.
So, how many bedrooms does that 6 to 7% equal?
I have not backed into that many, that number, yeah, that's what we're looking at now.
But that's common.
Yes, we're looking at which parcels can accommodate it, and then of those parcels, which are too small to expand their existing septic systems, and then from there back into which ones would need to have sewer service.
I wanna come back to that another way.
Okay.
Basically, we're at 75% today.
Yes.
If you look at Locust Hill plus comp plan-
Yeah.
Just rounding up, it's another 15, that gives us at 90.
Right.
And we gotta reserve 10%, that means we're at, we're at, we're maxed out.
Right, and so I, I think it's-
We're maxed out.
It's worth a conversation with Robert about-
We're maxed out, if what?
If we had to reserve 10%, we are maxed out.
Well, if, if the comp plan committee's vision to-
Right, and I'm using that number, 75% today.
Right.
And I just said, I took the 6 to 7 for the Locust Hill, 6 to 7 for comp plan.
Yep.
And just said it's 15%.
6%.
That's 90%.
Yeah.
You said you need comfortably to have a 10% reserve, 'cause that's what they want.
Yes.
So, we're at 90, we give a 10% reserve, we're, that's our limit.
Yes, you, so for instance, if, if another development came in at the fringes of the village, you'd, it would be a hard move.
We could, we'd have to say no.
Yeah, correct.
That's my point.
Unless you were doing, I'm sorry, Brandy, you were probably gonna say-
Well, no, Gary just said 7% for comp plan, so that includes the 7% for comp plan. So, that is-
Yes, it does.
Yeah, so we're not done until that's done.
Yeah, I'm including the comp plan, but she says another big development, let's just say, the town wants to put something somewhere and tie into our system, we'd have to say no.
So, that's really back to us other needs.
Again, by zero-sum game thing, now we have another developer come along, just like with the, with the gardens, and we, we built another train.
Well, you get, yes, without expanding the plant.
Right.
We're at max capacity.
That feels like the next conversation.
I just wanna put that another way.
I think that is a next level conversation, but Brandy's making a good point that that is a practical reality, that you could undertake a major capital upgrade to, to be general.
Well, well, now we know if 80, 80, 80 units is 7%.
About 7%, yeah, 17,000 gallons.
So, now we know how many-
Well, it won't be 17,000 gallons, it'll be 12.
Be careful.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, to summarize this, we don't have a letter that we can issue to the developer.
Not yet.
And we anticipate not having that letter until-
But it looks promising.
Yeah. We will not have that letter for the developer until we, our June meeting.
You should have it for your June meeting, yes.
That's all I wanted.
What kind of letter is this? 'Cause the letter I sent had no enforceability whatsoever, it just said, "You're good for zoning." So, if you wanna start coming together with an agreement, we gotta throw all, all sorts of other goodies in there.
Well, we said we would come back, and that's, I don't wanna step on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think this is, what we said we would do was an analysis of, you know, potential future use, and let's talk about the next step, and how, how do we communicate that with the developer.
And I, you know, in light of what you were just discussing with Robert, it would probably make sense at some point, if the board decides to offer capacity to the developer to understand the, the technical part of this.
It's gonna be a substantial book of fee.
Yeah.
And I've been, that was why I was trying to be discreet with it.
Okay.
The lid's been blown off that pressure cooker, so.
Did, did you want anything on Soho Water before I go?
Do we have an update?
We're here.
Only that there's no schedule at this point in time. So, for Soho Water, so Soho is still going back towards the county, I think Brandy and I were trying to get a sense of if they were gonna go to construction anytime soon, but it, it's not gonna be a spring or probably even a summer project at this point.
Aren't they under construction?
They are working, as I understand it, they are working on some stabilization work of some of the existing buildings.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Have we resolved the issue with the county or the state about where the district lies?
That's what you just said.
So, we have submitted an application to formally extend the village's service area outside of the village's borders, the village has, for 100 years, served properties outside the village's borders, but the D E C doesn't have any papers that show that, and so they have asked that papers be provided to show that.
Although they had vague papers, and they never asked for more specificity, but now we have to provide it.
Everybody's tightening up everywhere.
But that's, yeah, that's going on at the same time, so the-
It's in parallel.
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thanks, Brandy.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, I'm coming back up now to back to resolutions, okay? The next one on the list was the IMA for police IT support. This is, this is a revamp of everything that we've been doing for the past X number of years, having BOSIs, the person who was an independent contractor, just to remind everybody, went to work for BOSIs, BOSIs said, "Because you're now working for us, we need to have a different IMA," and so this is the agreement with BOSIs to be the IT provider for our village police department, who is very well versed on all of the equipment we have in there, the new cameras, the technology, the servers, et cetera. There's no change in terms of separately casting on the additional capacity, which we've added into it, but other than that, it's a yearly contract, I'd like to make a motion to approve the alter county BOSIs as our service provider for IT support for the police department.
Second.
Questions?
If this particular person chooses to leave BOSIs, do we still have to, like, this-
We'd have to go back out for bid, find somebody else.
Okay.
Plain, plain simple.
Okay.
And this same person is the same person that does our court system as well.
Okay, is there a separability, is there a clause in here that termination, 30 days notice? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so, thank you. Next, Rick.
Okay. Over the years, it's come to the board's attention that there's an urgent need for a municipal bathroom, and I studied, took a, took a, took a look into what the possibilities are, and basically, there is one supplier of an ADA compliant porta potty, basically, restroom, and this is larger than most of the ones you see normally, you will find that there are handicap accessible, handicap accessible units, but this is the only unit that is actually fully ADA compliant with-
Do you like wheel, wheelchair into it?
You can wheel, well, it has hand grips, so you can move around, and it's the only one that is fully compliant, and there's only one, basically, in a couple hundred-mile radius, as far as I can tell. So, I, I walked around, we looked, we scouted out sites, and after moving through the municipal parking lot, looking at other sites, we decided that a spot, basically, towards the southwest corner of the municipal lot would be the best place for it. It's on a piece of pavement over there, it is right by the handicap spots, and it seems like it will have good entrance and egress, it's in a reasonably visible part of the, of the village, so people can find it, it also needs an electrical hookup, 'cause we need to illuminate it, so this spot really was one of the few, or the only one that ticked all of the boxes. It's come to our attention that some people are concerned about odors and smell in the, in the, in the, in the area. If, we have the, with this, we have a service contract, a weekly service contract for, for the cleanup and removal of the waste, and if we need to get cleaned up removal, it can be done on demand, basically, by the service, so we can have our highway guys go in, check it out, take a look. We would lock the bathroom, basically, from evening, night-
And was it the end of a police shift?
End of the police shift, so it'd be, right, so 11 o'clock, and then unlock it again with the morning police shift, about 7:00 a.m., so it would not be open overnight, and that would deter vandalism. So, I do understand the concerns about, you know, having a porta potty located and then being, you know, unpleasant to be around, but I think when they're run right, it's not a problem, and so what I would like to do is, we have our service plan, we have, we know that we can get it on, 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 on demand service when we need it, we have our highway guys, I would like to go ahead and place the unit there before Memorial Day, and we run it through Labor Day, and if it turns out that it's untenable, it turns out that it's getting abused, or it's not working, or it's smelly, or it's really a problem, then we have to look at relocating or removing it, but for now, this is the most workable spot, and I think it's, it's really ticks off all the boxes. So, I have a resolution for the board to spend up to $6,000 for the contract and for the installation and, of this, of this porta potty, so, I'd like, don't you read the resolution or not?
I don't think so.
Okay, yeah, I don't need to. So, I'd like to make a motion that we, the board authorizes the expenditure up to $6,000 for an ADA accessible portable toilet to be placed in the municipal parking lot, but also pending any, which may be moved pending any problems that arise.
Second, discussion.
Do you have a, like, a other alternate spot, if, if it's stinky, or?
There's one, it would be harder to work, we don't have, we don't have great electrical connections, maybe at that time, we might be able to convince a private, somebody to put it on private property, if it turns out that it's really a boon. Certainly, we've heard through the comp plan and many other people, that people really want this kind of facility available, and so when people see the utility, and especially the stores in town, when people stop knocking on their doors, and they're like, "Stor, I'd say, can the bathroom, the businesses want this." So-
I would say residents and people want it as well.
Yes, every, yeah, and so this is, I think, an example of where we can try something, and we should see if it works, and if it works, it's good, if it doesn't, we'll, we'll modify, we'll modify course.
And I'll say, this was in our budget, so it's not a new expenditure, it's something we budgeted for.
Right, I just have a question for Rick, is this going to be like a month-to-month fee, or are you signing an annual contract?
We are signing the fee, the contract will be for the duration from basically a couple days before Memorial Day to a couple days after Labor Day, and then they have, technically, it's a monthly.
Oh, okay, so this is just gonna be $6,000 for the summer, or?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
And it's probably not even gonna total that, but it's just like to-
Okay, that's fine, I just wanna know what to expect with that.
Yeah, it's about $1,200 a month.
Okay.
And then maybe some measures.
Yeah, if they have to come out.
If they have to come out and pump it, and stuff like that.
And then I know you mentioned the, moving the bike racks, will that still be easy enough to get your bike in?
Yep, we're gonna push the bike rack over to the fence line, over by Roy, and then the mayor and I, with our tape measure, went out and measured, and there was enough room, how long is a bicycle, how much space is there, yes, and there will be space, space over there. Upgrading the bike racks in the village is also another issue, which we can certainly tackle, but we did make sure that there would be space to park and lock your bike, basically, on the park.
Yeah, we don't wanna eliminate it.
Have we, have we spoken to the owner of a Roy about this?
No.
Okay, then, you know, I, I'd like to see this dependent on a Roy being okay with it.
You can say no.
I say no.
Well, I think you did say if there's objections, we can, we'll deal with the objections and-
As they arise.
And so forth.
As they arise.
And I think that would be, I think that would be covered under the objection clause, and we can-
Can, can we add something to this that we will notify the Chamber of Commerce that we're doing this?
We have.
Okay, great.
Chamber of Commerce has fully supported the issue.
Yeah.
Fair.
Yep.
Would you take a comment from the crowd as it, as it?
Sure, yep, yep, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna-
Thank you very much. Kathleen Evans, Village resident, and I do agree with Lydia, and it's especially because after hearing all the comments we heard earlier today about process, this is a pure example of how you treat your neighbor and the process of getting something done, and to make a reach out, like Lydia suggested, and let a business owner that's going to have a large porta potty in their backyard, outdoor dining, which we've done nothing but discuss about for two years, if I was, that would affect me, where I would want to eat outside, and I just think that would be very fair and a very kind and neighborly way in process, just to think about them, so.
I think we said we would, as part of our-
Oh, I, I'm sorry, then I must have misunderstood.
No, we said we would reach out to them.
Oh, I thought you said that would be part of the, under the-
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna call and help individually, we said as part of it, we wanted to reach out.
So, that would be done before it's put in?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I would just say that the actual site in this is not up against their fence line, there's some space in between.
So, is it sort of the equivalent of like a car that's parked in the lot next to their property?
Yeah, that's not a bad analogy.
Ish.
Ish.
It goes right up to, it's 96 by 96, I think.
96 by 85 or so.
So, it fits on the-
Breaches.
Right, it fits on the pad, the pad that's there right now.
Okay.
That's been blacktopped.
And then there's grass, and then there's, and then there's bushes, right, and there's screening from the, from the parking lot.
Right.
So, it's already screened.
True.
That's big.
It's, it's necessary for the full, for the full access.
I'm just looking at the squares on the board.
Yeah, no, it's about double, it's about double the size of what you would consider like, sort of one that you-
Well, here's a picture, did you see the picture?
Yeah.
You know, I, I think it's, it's great for ADA compliance, I also think for families, you know, if you have little kids.
Yeah, being able to bring everybody in all at the same time.
And, and I really do wanna stress that, that if, you know, I think, again, I, my, the way I try to look at these things are, we're gonna try it, if we run into problems, then we need to adapt and be flexible, and we might say, you know, this doesn't work at all, and this has, you know, been a disaster, and we'll figure out what else to do, we'll take it out, but if it works, then we've made a real stride forward, and, you know, I'd like to think that we can be flexible enough in our thinking and in our doing that we're not locked in, that, you know, that we're not saying we're locked into this, what we're saying is, we're gonna try this as an experiment, and, you know, we'll take the feedback, much like we did for outdoor dining.
Yeah, and it's, well, I mean, it's, it's a useful experiment, 'cause you're right, the comp plan has been talking about this, and business owners have been talking about this, and everybody's, you know, people who have encountered little kids peeing in the parking lots have been talking about this for a while, and so I think it's-
And adults.
And, right. We try, we try and talk about this.
So, we, we have a human waste problem as it is already.
Right.
And then, you know, and the comp plan, I mean, for years, people have said, "Hey, let's have a municipal bathroom," but that's a much larger expense, a much larger-
Right, that's like a whole construction.
Infrastructure, so this is, this is a baby step.
Yeah.
So, I think I'm gonna vote against this, 'cause I think that, once we take the baby step, it, it's gonna be in the air, and then it's gonna be the camel with its nose under the tent, and we're just gonna have to do a full plumbing facility bathroom, and I would like to see that really come out of the comp plan, if that's what everyone wants, and, and then we adopt it, but right now, I think it's, once we do this, I think there's gonna be an expectation that we're gonna have public benefit in this community. That's all. That's all.
Well, I mean, I think we'll have to look at.
I just do.
Well, there already is an expectation, I think, that people want us to have it. But the other thing is.
That's what I'm saying, let's wait for the, instead of trying to pick what we think the comp plan is going to look like someday, let's wait until it's finished.
This, but this is, this is not to solve the comp plan's problems.
There's nothing you can say.
Like, let me finish. Well, no, let me finish. No, because I think you're, you're misconstruing a little bit what I'm saying. This is not to solve the comp plan's problems. This is something that we have heard for years from people, from residents, from the business community, that they would, that there is no place, there is no public facility. And so we are.
Yeah, Sam will send everyone to CVS.
Right.
I understand.
So, so we are answering the need. If you, I mean, your concern is, okay, this is sort of, as you said, you know, kind of incremental. And I understand the concern, but I think we can evaluate it. I think we have to have the capacity to evaluate each one of these things along the way. And I'm not, I'm not concerned about the slippery slope, as it were. I feel like right now I'm more concerned about trying to satisfy a need that we've heard directly from residents and businesses.
Expectation is going to be there. So I'd rather just, I'll make it quick. I mean, I'd rather just wait to see what the comp plan comes up with, what we adopt from there.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Name?
I'm sorry. Am I allowed to ask?
Too late. What do you want?
I just, it's not difficult.
Eric? You don't get to get on jail.
Eric Steinman, I'm just curious. I just want to know, who's the manufacturer of this?
Well, we're renting it from McHaring Sanitation.
Okay, but do you know like the model or anything like that?
I had, there's a picture of it online.
Okay.
And I, and it's in the resolution.
Okay. And is there electricity inside? Like, there's lighting?
There is not lighting. We're going to have to install that. And there is fortunately, there's power, there's a power drop right there.
Well, we have lighting outside because what's important is that there's actually where we have the, the parking, we put in lighting there and this is right beside that, those lighting posts.
So the lighting outside will illuminate the inside if someone is, were to use it after hours?
What they requested is that we light up the outside till it's visible. I don't know how it works on the inside. I'll be honest with you on that part. But.
Why not?
Well, why not? The most important, what we've heard from the Board of Health is that it's not the inside they were concerned about. It was the outside. So it was visible and lighted there where people were standing and it wasn't in the dark.
Got it.
That was what was important to the Board of Health, that the entrance and exit was not in the dark.
Got it. And so it's going to go on that pad that's just basically next to where the bike racks are and before you get to the EV charging station?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
The bike rack's going to move.
And the bike rack is going to move?
Right, for better access, just along the fence line.
Along the fence line. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Holiday tree lighting. I want to get ahead of the game this year.
Yeah.
It's May.
It's not Christmas in May. It will be still Christmas in November for the holiday tree, tree lighting. But as we saw last year, we saw coming out of pandemic, there was a resurgence of wanting to rebuild some of the events that we had. And the holiday tree lighting event was one of those things that the community embraced. And we had it here last year in the municipal parking lot. There was a lot of people that came forward and says, why can't we make this bigger, better like it was, rather than what we had? So with that, I can go through all this, but basically Gail Saucier has helped us run this before. She has volunteered and wanted to be appointed as the chair or the focal point for the Village of Rhinebeck Holiday Tree Lighting Event. She will coordinate with the chamber and us on getting the tree lights up. She will coordinate having whatever vendors can go on into the municipal parking lot. She will coordinate the parade with the fire company and the churches. And she will be forming a committee to make all of this happen.
Great.
Right? And we will be moving it and having it permanently now in the municipal lot like we did last year, but hopefully filled with a lot more people and a lot more vendors and a lot more cheer and a lot more kids, right?
So she's going to be helping with, with promotion of the event and?
So it being Christmas in May, as equally important for the stringing of the lights is the removal of the lights for the health of the trees. And I want to make sure that that is not neglected. It's, we all get very charged up about putting them up and then it comes time to take them down. We're like, oh, yeah, we kind of forgot about it. So I'd like to make sure that she's got that, got a plan for the agenda for removal.
I'm going to push back on you because when we said we weren't going up into the branches, we were only going on the trunk, we went to the tree commission and tree commission said, that's fine, you don't have to remove them as long as you're not up into the branches.
Well, I think they're growing and they're going into them.
Well.
They're going to set them up.
And I think Dave's Tree Service does that every year.
Well, we need to have some provision for the health of the trees.
And that's, I agree. And now we need to work with them.
I was going to mention that if Rick knew about that.
But that's, wasn't currently defined in the first goal.
Right, so I think that she needs to make sure that.
Well, is she part of the tree, is she part of not? Sorry, this is for the holiday tree lighting? This isn't for like the fifty trees? Like, we still deal with that.
Are you, are you just talking about just the tree?
The Christmas tree.
Just the Christmas tree.
Oh, I'm sorry, my, I misunderstood.
Just the Christmas tree party.
And the, and the menorah too, right? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
I did not understand that either.
I misunderstood that, okay. So that's all moot.
The Christmas tree right by the doughboy and then light that up.
Well, how is, okay, I'm not going to bring that one up.
I'm going to, I'm going to come back and say the street lighting of the trees is part of this overall scheduling of things to be done. Her job was to help work with scheduling that, not the maintenance there of that. Because we took, the village took that over from the chamber, if you remember.
Can we ask her if she can help with that?
Or can we ask the tree commission if they would be helpful for that?
Yeah.
The tree commission is pretty close to make that. And this is something, you need somebody with a couple of ladders and a little agility and some time.
So is the theory that Dave's loosens them every year?
Or restrains them or something.
I think we need to work that out with whoever does the lighting. This person's job is to make sure everything comes together, not to do the maintenance.
Well, but I would consider doing the maintenance part of the coming together.
No.
Why don't we have the maintenance follow to our maintenance department?
Be a stone. Right, yeah. We can, we can certainly see under new management if that's possible.
Great. That sounds like a job for our department.
Right. All right. So it does not include the maintenance and the removal of the lights. I want to be very clear.
But we're going to, that's going to be.
You can, we can address that. And I would like the tree commission to really focus on doing that, addressing that.
I was going to say Kendall Highway Department.
Well, I didn't say how, who. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for the Village of Holiday Tree Lighting to, to occur on November 18th from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Village of Rhinebeck Municipal Lot. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Duchess County Shared Services Provider. Again, this is deja vu. We seem to be getting these, the county wanting us to renew these all the time. Currently, we do not have any shared services with the county, but we maintain the agreement for the opportunity, should the opportunity arise, so that we can have shared services if one would arise. They would ask that we would sign a resolution in support, right, the shared services with the county for a fee of, you know, if there's whatever payment or whatever. There's no payment required to approve this. But there is a paragraph in type of payment that says payment as full and con, and complete consideration for all services so rendered. The municipality should pay the county $60 per hour with a minimum of one hour thereafter if we were to include the county into doing the work for us. Okay? I just want to make that's clear. County's not doing it for free. And we do currently do not have any shared services, but we year after year have had the opportunity to do it.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amended and extension to the intermunicipal agreement with the County of Duchess and Municipal Corporation and the Village of Rhinebeck for the shared services agreement. Second.
Second.
Discussion.
I was going to say, we did, a long time ago when I first wrote some RFPs, it was helpful to have them a little bit. We did use them a little bit, yeah.
I think we did.
And we did a few years back.
Yeah, yeah, it was helpful to help us, help us get some templates in, assist us. So it's nice to be able to call on them.
Yep. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good. Thank you. New York Class Lead Participant. We discussed this at the last meeting, I think, or was it two meetings ago? This is for our treasurer, who was already a participant in New York Class. And maybe it was at one of our budget meetings that it came up, where our treasurer Karen McCloslin has been asked and has the appointment of the Village of Rhinebeck as a new lead participant for New York Class. This is the formal art, formal resolution to adopt that agreement, to have our treasurer continue as, to serve as lead participant of the New York Class until it, until it resigns pursuant to the Article 3 of the New York Class Municipal Cooperative Agreement. And withdraws from the agreement or the agreement is amended to name a new lead participant should Karen not be able to fulfill that. Right? So be it further resolved, the village board hereby authorizes the mayor to execute the amended New York Class Municipal Agreement to be effective August 1st of 2023. Do I have a second?
I'm seconding this resolution in its entirety.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Good work, Karen.
Aye.
Yeah, thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Lydia?
Yep.
You're up. Appointment of zoning board and.
Yeah, so we advertised, starting in early March, for a vacancy on the ZBA for the term ending 20, April 1st, 2026. And we got a handful of applicants. And Tim Decker, the current chair, and I interviewed all who agreed to be interviewed. And Tim and I agreed that we would like to raise to this board the appointment of Jason Greenwald as the replacement for the term ending April, August, April 1st, 2026. And Brandon O'Brien as an alternate. So I would like to present a resolution to that effect.
Second. Any discussion?
So just so you know, Jason, he works with local, like land use groups in New York City. So he's very familiar with the power of a zoning code. And he's also very familiar with what happens when you change it ad hoc. So one of the things that impressed, even though he's very new to the community of Rhinebeck, one of the things that really impressed both Tim and I was that he's a staunch believer that, you know, zoning code should be abide by. Brandon O'Brien is a lifelong resident of the village. He works in construction. He's really excited about volunteering for the village in some way. He's super excited to learn. And I'm actually really excited for the possibility of having Brandon be part of the ZBA planning world for a long time. And they're both delighted with the opportunity to serve if appointed.
Does he know that he's not supposed to bring matters in front of his own board?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so far, he doesn't do any work in the village. Most of his work is done at the moment in Westchester.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
Great, thank you. As part of that, we did advertise for alternates to the planning board. We only received one application. I would like your permission to reopen that until the end of, I don't know, until basically we get more than one applicant, just to be able to have.
You need a settlement date.
June 15th. Can we keep it open until June 15th?
Only another month.
June 30th?
June 30th.
June 30th for an alternate? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
No, 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 no.
Aye. Aye, so carry.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're next up for a historic.
Who seconded it?
I don't know who seconded it.
What did it?
Who seconded it?
Brand seconded it.
By the year?
Yeah, by the year. All right, so this is just a resolution commencing the local law adoption process for the proposed local law 3 of 2023, Local Auto Amend Village Code, Chapter 64 and Chapter 120, Article 8. This is all in relation to the conversations we've been having about the historic district. The whole resolution is online. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Also. Also online is the Seeker Part 1. We've also redlined the existing laws so that people can understand exactly what's changing and what's not. Obviously, the law that we're going to pass is not the red line of the current laws. Just, that's not how it works. So just for clarity, it's all there. But this resolution is to, let me just do the resolve parts. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby accepts proposed law X to amend Village Code 64, Chapter 120, Section 8, Article 8, for the purposes of commencing the local law adoption process. Be it further resolved that pursuant to the provisions of Seeker, the board hereby determines that the adoption of the proposed local law is a Type 1 action. And the board accepts the attached Seeker Part 1 for the proposed action. And be it further resolved that the board determines that it will be the only agency with approval authority over the proposed action and therefore declares itself to be the lead agency for conduct of the environmental review under Seeker. And be it further resolved that the board directs the village clerk to forward the proposed local law to the Duchess County Planning Board for its review and advisory opinion pursuant to state law. And be it further resolved that a public hearing on said local law will be held on June 13th?
I, we need to get 30 days. This, doesn't the state statute say 30 days to hear back from the Duchess County Planning?
Yes.
So we have to get it out and get it back. So that might be a little tight.
It's going to be very tight.[1566.41]
It's gonna be very tight.
So do I do July?
The planning board would be deeply grateful if we didn't do July.
I think we can, Lydia, I'd like to see if we can push down.
Yeah, we can, we can, how about we try for the 13th and then if they don't get back to us sometime, then we can.
Well, we have to get, if we get it out tomorrow, I don't think there's a problem.
Yeah, exactly. We should be able to get it.
I don't know why we can't.
Sure. Okay, so it shall be held on June 13th at the Village of Reinbeck Village Hall located at 76 East Market Street, the Village of Reinbeck at 6:00 PM. And be it further resolved that the village clerk is hereby directed to give public and post notice of said public hearing as required by law. And be it further resolved that the village clerk is directed to fulfill the notice requirements in Section 7, et cetera, of New York State Village Law, including providing notice of the hearing to the town of Reinbeck. I propose a resolution. I make a motion to accept this resolution.
Second. Discussion.
Same.
We worked on the draft and I think we're satisfied.
Yeah, I think we're satisfied. I'm working with the county now and building out a good map because right now we've just been copying maps from all sorts of places and the county is going to help us build a map of our own, which is great, for free.
Thanks.
So I'm county planning.
You work with.
Dylan Tuttle. So Dylan Tuttle is the Reinbeck.
Right.
Is the Reinbeck rep for Dutchess County Planning. Then there's like the map guy who's.
Okay.
Great.
All in favor say aye.
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 We were so close.
Gary, Gary seconded it.
What did I do?
We're so, you seconded it. We're so close.
Alright, so we had Astor Bridge left on the agenda and I don't believe there is an update for Astor Bridge, correct?
There is an update.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
There is.
Not the accident, right?
Not the accident.
Not the accident. So, and I realize actually at this moment that it probably should present the resolution. So we have received some communication from the New York State Department of Transportation about their plans for the construction at Astor Bridge. They are now asking as part of that construction project if we will approve the closing of Rockefeller Lane from March 1st, 2025 to September 31st, 2025. And this is because basically the, this is the construction zone of the bridge. So I did have some communication with their engineering department and they said, well, you guys can use Astor. And I said, well, the intersection at Astor is not a great intersection, so will you make improvements to the Astor intersection if people are going to be forced to go through it? So what I received from them is that the site, this is the communication from DOT. Site distance along the north side of the intersection is restricted by vegetation and sloping ground. We've requested a survey in the area and will improve the site distance at the intersection prior to detour. And then the other, the other problem there at Astor is that there's kind of a swell and some cars bottom out when they go through. And then it said during the design phase, we will review drainage and roadway slopes at the intersection and see if the swell can be eliminated. So I think we've got DOT's cooperation to make the Astor, improve the Astor intersection so it can be used for that time period for people who normally would go through Rockefeller.
Intersection with Astor?
You mean Asher?
I'm Asher, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Asher, 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 Asher.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, getting a little late. Intersection with Asher. So I'd like to make a resolution that the board accepts the DOT's closure of Rockefeller Lane from March 1st to September, March 1st, 2025, December 31st, 2025, pending their improvements to the Asher Road intersection.
Second.
I would like to add something I think we should be communicating to this sort of handful of buildings in here that are going to be impacted by it. Obviously, it's two years from now and everybody's going to forget until it actually happens, but I think that we should be in communication with them about this, like, you know, starting as soon as possible. Just so they know and.
Right.
We don't.
Right.
I would also like to include in the communication the safety factor of why it's being closed because.
Yeah.
Right.
And what they're going to promise to do for Asher and, you know, we'll just tell them everything we just talked about, but.
For sure.
Yeah.
Is there really no way that this construction project can be moved closer given the accident that has happened?
Oh, you mean at speed of the time?
Yeah.
What's the accident caused by?
We own, we own the pedestrian bridge. They do not. They own the road, right?
But that pedestrian bridge is going to be gone as part of the upgrade.
As part of the upgrade.
Right.
And then are we going to have to rebuild it?
Well, no, the pedestrian bridge will be incorporated into the bridge.
No, I'm saying given it will be incorporated into the future bridge, why not build said bridge sooner?
Oh, I don't know what the DOT's timetable.
They've already, they've already moved it.
Yeah, we've already lost a year. They haven't designed, they haven't designed it yet or brought it, or brought us a design.
Was the, I'm sorry, I wasn't here last week for the accident. Was it caused by sort of a design flaw with the bridge or was it just?
No.
No, but it took out the pedestrian.
It took out the pedestrian.
Oh.
Yeah, the car went up like over the.
Yeah, I saw the picture, but I didn't see what it.
Yeah, and those, those, the ironwork that was damaged there, that ironwork's probably about 130, 120, 130 years old.
Even though it collapsed, it actually, I guess it kept him from going.
Yeah, it looks like actually the bridge kept him from going all the way across. And I'm hoping, I mean, we haven't, it's not been removed and we have an insurance claim that'll go in and such, but at some point I assume we will take possession of that ironwork and we'll see if we can, we've had some people who are very nice about helping to restore the Astor gates.
Yeah, yeah.
And see if they can fix it up, right? And, and it's going to be that ironwork was going to be removed and given to us at any rate. So now it's a question of.
It's ours.
Back into, it's ours.
We own.
So is the pedestrian bridge, so is, can pedestrians cross it at all?
No. So we're waiting on the evaluation by the, if everything's been turned over to the insurance. We are not the adjusters, we are not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe they will temper it, we don't know.
We don't, we don't, we don't. So, but the resolution is to accept the DOT's proposal for their closure pending their improvements to Asher Road.
I would second that. I, the only thing I want to say is I've heard anecdotally, not confirmed, that the town may be doing the bridge on South Parsonage, which they own, we don't own, over the Landsman Hill, next year. We would not like to have both bridges being done simultaneously. Independently, state DOT moved this bridge, but if the town continues and wants to do the South Parsonage, which I have no clue, I don't know, contact your town representative, you know, in terms of that, it would not be good for us to have both bridges under construction at the same time.
Oh, no.
That would be terrible. Do we have any faith that the town board is going to talk to us about it before they take action on this?
No, no. Back to the bridge issue, some people have asked me what the DOT traffic plan is and basically it looks like they're going to be blocking off one lane of the bridge, setting up the mobile traffic lights, so it'll be one lane of traffic.
I want to make it clear that that is not our idea, that that was not our idea.
This is DOT's idea all the way.
The one lane traffic for six months.
It's their, it's their website and their services.
Let's move on.
I need a vote.
Okay.
I need a vote.
Okay. Oh, yes, sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Rick, you'll draft.
I'll try to let him.
Right through Gary. You're going to make the motion?
Gary seconded it.
I seconded, yes. Alright, music on Market for the record.
And if you finish me, I'll second you.
Good night Karen.
Thank you Karen.
Great, thanks Karen.
Bye.
Again, this, this event application was submitted by the Reinbeck Area Chamber of Commerce to continue doing music on Market Street, which is live music in the, in the village, which is three to four piece ensemble with vocals for community members and tourists to enjoy, beginning on Friday, May 26th through October 7th. The time would be from 7, I can't read that, 1:30 to 7:30 PM, I think is what it says.
No, 5:00 PM.
7:30 PM.
5:00 PM to 7:30.
Yeah, on Fridays, 5:00 PM to.
7:30.
To 7:30 and then on Saturdays, 12:30 to 3:00 PM. I expanded it. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Reinbeck Area Chamber of Commerce to continue with the live music in the village during summer.
Second.
Discussion.
This is a continuation of program.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's only in connection with the chamber and the, even not the Barker situation.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Barker.
Barker.
No, Karen will mark it, that's a different.
The next is the Juneteenth display. This is from Culture Connect. Culture Connect working as before with the Buckley Middle School to have students create a large scale art project on Juneteenth. And they would like to have that displayed on the village hall lawn like they have in the past or in front of the Doughboy from June 16th to the 20th. Both Henry Freisneck and Culture Connect board members, right, are working as a team with the middle school, has exact, has not exactly determined what the project will end up looking like, but it will most likely be an artist's display, right, a Juneteenth poster and a Juneteenth yard sign near the project of space allowance. Some proposed images of the yard sign poster. I'd like to make a motion to have it displayed where it was last year on the village hall lawn.
Second.
From the dates, from June 16th to the 20th. Second by Rick, discussion?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to put it in front of the Doughboy.
Correct. Yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So Karen. Alright. Okay. You all copy of the minutes, I'd like to make a motion through.
One more, Gary, event application.
What?
The Interact Car Wash, a late addition.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Yes, we got an application today for an event to be held on.
May 21st.
May 21st, yes. From 11:00 to 3:00 PM. This is from the Reinbeck Rotary Interact Club, who would like to have, work with their high, their Reinbeck Interact, it's a high school, would like to do a car wash in the drive between the fire station and the police station on Sunday, May 21st from 11:00 to 3:00 in order to raise money for the school backpack program at Chancery Livingston. This program provides food for students and their families over the weekend so they do not go hungry. Students will ask for a suggested donation for each car wash as they did last fall and when they raised $1,000 last fall for doing this. I'd like to make a motion to approve this pending the approval of our police department and fire department to be able to host that, to hold that event.
Second.
Second.
Vanessa, thank you. Any discussion?
I'm going to recuse myself because my daughter.
Is she going to wash cars?
I don't know.
Is she going to get you to wash cars?
She's probably got softball games, so I don't know.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, now minutes approval. The minutes have been released, to everybody to review and comment. Comments have been suggested and incorporated right into the minutes. I would like to make a motion to approve to 3:16, 23, to 3:20, 23, to 4:00, 4:23, and to 4:11, 23. We don't do enough work here. Minutes.
A second.
Discussion.
Susanna, what's your last name?
Renzi.
Renzi?
Is that on the minutes?
It is in the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Renzi, R-E-N-Z-I. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm delighted you walked in and I was like, this is great.
Sorry, I had my softball game first.
Understandable.
Did you wait?
No, I called out a don't play. I thought I had priority on the baseline when the other player ran into me trying to catch the ball. I moved out. I didn't realize.
Long as you're okay.
Huh?
Long as you're not hurt.
No, but it was a pretty nasty collision. I didn't see her. She came running in from my side and I kept running and bam.
Alright, I made a motion, do I have a second?
Yes, Lydia.
Oh, Lydia seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rick, tree commission.
Okay. Tree commission does not have any actionable items with the one that's on there has already been taken care of. We have welcomed three new members, Kirk Quackenbush, Michael Forrenza. Forrenza, thank you very much. And Chris Hall, they were active in the tree planting that took place on the 29th. And the commission remains active and working. You may see some volunteers in the coming months out pruning some of our smaller municipal trees, basically to sucker and remove some limbs. Basically, we will take a look at the trees that we plant for the first couple of years of their life. That's part of our agreement with the homeowners. So you may see some folks that have nice bright yellow t-shirts that say Tree Commission and they will be out doing a little bit of pruning.
Great.
I'd just like to comment, I thought the tree planting on the 29th went very well. Trusty Bertozzi and myself were there.
Was that down?
I know. Were participating in the, in the tree planting. It was a small number of trees, we did 11 trees and we were in it, the rain, I don't know if anybody remembers that day. It was pouring in the morning, buckets. And right at nine o'clock, the rain quit and stayed off until we were all finished and packed up and, and home as well.
And then it rained for five days, so they were also happy.
And Pat Evans was there, leading the team as well, so Kathleen, please.
Lot of mud, he said.
Lot of mud.
Lot of mud.
Lot of mud.
I'll hug the official after action report for the commission for our next meeting.
Yeah, you'll, we're going to bring you a mud pie.
Excellent.
Climate Smart.
Okay, so you heard my compost update. I forgot to mention that this is international compost awareness.
Oh, my bad.
Two words.
Some good news, our, our youth member of the Climate Smart Task Force for, since our inception, was just accepted to Cornell University, so congratulations to scout pronto.
Very good. Please tell her things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just a couple of other updates I want to highlight. On Earth Day, we did work with some volunteers to check on our Trees for Tribs samplings at the highway department property along the Landsman Hill. And we mulched them and kind of checked in on them. We have lost a number of those samplings, but that's sort of par for the course when you're planting such tiny little baby trees in the riparian buffer. We did have some flooding events before those baby trees were really established, but some of them are doing really well. So that we're, we're just keeping up with our, with our consistent maintenance of that planting. Also wanted to mention our ongoing collaboration with Maris College students in the environmental science and computer science programs. Mayor Bassett and I did go down to Maris to see this semester's final presentations, which is really outstanding. They're doing everything from putting out flood mitigation pamphlet, which we shared through the village email list and have hard copies here at village hall, to kind of more crunching data and tweaking the algorithm of how to predict flooding of the Landsman Hill. They are also making a plan to install another sensor. Our first sensor is up by the village highway department in the Landsman Hill. Second sensor will be in Crystal Lake, so they'll be able to compare contrast levels and data from those two sensors. And in preparation for that, we designed an educational sign to be placed there in Crystal Lake, sort of near where the dock is behind that guardrail. And the educational sign, I think, I don't know if you've got a chance to look at it, it's up on the cloud, but I wanted to purchase that sign before the end of this fiscal year. So any feedback, let me know tomorrow if you have feedback on that sign. The goal really is to educate the public about what this sensor is sticking in, in the Crystal Lake and about the collaboration and about our, you know, us looking into how do we deal with increased flooding with the, with climate change bringing more severe and frequent storms. So the idea is the signage would be sort of like when you're at a, at a park or a museum, there's, it's sort of a 45 degree angles mounted there into the ground. And it would be, it would be printed to withstand, you know, weather outside. So I don't know if we've, you know, in some of our parks, we have little brass plaques, dedication plaques and that sort of thing. We have signage, like we are autism supportive community, plant for dog poop, that kind of thing, but this is a little bit more like an educational sign. So I wanted to share it with the board and get any feedback.
I don't understand your vision for what the sign looks like or how.
Like a lawn sign?
Did you look at?
I'm no, I'm looking, I'm looking at the sign, but at first I thought this would be like a, like a lawn sign that we put out kind of normally, but it's not. You're talking about something.
No, it's a more permanent sign.
So it's a permanent sign?
Yeah. It's not just a lawn, a lawn sign stuck on the stakes. This is like an installed sign.
Would it be about the same size as a lawn sign?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not so hot for a permanent marker.
Where would it be?
So you know when you go up to the Crystal Lake Park and you park your cars and then you see the dock, right? And to the left of the dock, there is a little fencing. So the sensor would be in the water by the dock there and then the signage would be sort of on the other side of the fencing so that you're not bumping into it. It's already kind of protected behind the fencing.
I think I'm okay with a temporary sign, but I'm not really sold on having a permanent sign there.
If you have a reason?
I, I really, I don't understand its impact. I don't know if this is going to be the final resting place for this sensor.
It is.
If you get it in, okay.
It is the final resting place.
It, it seems like a lot.
We had the tree commission signs at the Lions Park about the foliage, explaining why we're letting the trees.
Right, no, but those are all, those are all non-permanent signs. This is permanent.
I thought we pulled them because we didn't really think they were necessary, not because they were intended.
Are you talking about when we did the pruning to explain?
No, when we decided to let the trees grow on the banks of the, of the Landsman Hill, they put a sign up. It's, I don't know if this was 10 years ago or.
This predates me.
And there was a sign that said, we're letting these trees grow because we're, you know, strengthening Riparian stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
That predates me. It looks there.
No, because I think we said, oh, we don't have to explain why we're letting things grow there on. So it was there for a couple of years, so.
This will look like a scientific device sitting in the water. I think some explanation to the public is necessary and so I wanted to take the opportunity to talk about why, what's the big picture here? Why are we doing this? And this is kind of a cool project.
Direct them to more information about it as well.
Yeah, I think it's cool. You can probably guess that.
Yeah, no, I'm like concerned, I mean, like, you have to...
And when they were on the floor, and then the other one...
Yeah, I mean, somebody's gonna maintain it looks like forever.
Make it permanent, though. It's one expense, and we're done.
But we can always remove it.
Yeah. Can we get a little... Can we say "designed" at least?
This isn't designed.
No, not the... I think the design for the actual mounting and all the good stuff.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I just think you could get like a weatherproof sign that's not gonna last like a year, and then just put... Get formed.
I just don't want it to look...
And then you're good for four years.
I don't want it to look crappy. I want it to look nice, and like, we have a beautiful park, let's do something that sort of...
Reflects the beauty.
Yeah.
I mean, personally, I'd like to see the design for what you want it to be, and then I... Because it's a little... It's too big for me. Design of that design.
All right, we want to get moving on this. Can we move forward on saying, if Rick blesses it, we can...
I don't think that's legal.
No, yeah.
No, no, no.
I think Vanessa should bring forth...
It's underneath the procurement policy, so, I mean, it's less than...
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Why don't we just give it a dollar?
Well, we do. She has it.
No, I'm just... It's underneath the procurement threshold. I can just go by. I've budgeted for this.
She has potential to purchase this.
I mean, you can just go to timely signs and like...
Which she did.
Oh, and this is...
But that's the question.
I don't understand what's happening.
It's not gonna interfere with the kids jumping out of waters and that...
No. They can't, no.
Could I bring up something?